Welcome to the Six Epsom Editorial Board. We're talking to the candidates for the Central KSAT Commissioner as well, I guess informally, but Physician Three, District Three, the Kansas Commissioners. Ed, we'll let you actually know, we'll let Linda start, she's in the seat right now. Two minutes, introduce yourself, anything else you want to tell us, then we'll do that at crack, and then we'll do Q and A.
Terrific. Well, I'll start by saying thank you for having me here today. I've been looking forward to being here and having a chance to talk with you about issues and things that are important here in KSAT County. I wanted to tell you a little bit about myself and why I'm running for County Commissioner. You may know that I worked for Puget Sound Energy for almost 34 years before my appointment in January, and during that time, I circled the sound, as I say. I am a native Washingtonian and held many different positions working for PSE during that time. Some of my background and experience includes environmental permitting, land use, budgets, affordable housing, which I had the privilege of being involved in while I was on the Burlington Housing Authority Board. A lot of my background was in infrastructure planning and coordination of comprehensive plans and the utility element of comprehensive plans, and of course, emergency management. I first came to KSAT County almost 20 years ago when I drove across the bridge to interview for a job with PSE, and it was the first time I had really been to KSAT County. The person who interviewed me spent a few minutes talking about the role and responsibilities of the job, and she was a wonderful marketer for KSAT County because she then spent three hours driving me from Bremerton to Pauls Bow, Bainbridge, up to Hansville, Seaback, and around to Port Orchard. And I was really taken with the beauty of the area and the opportunities that I saw here. I went back home and told my husband, I didn't know if they would offer me the job, but we were moving here, and I'm glad to say it actually did work out. The opportunities that I saw those many years ago are the opportunities I see here in KSAT County today. And the reason why I'm running is because I believe we have extraordinary things in our future here in KSAT County, and I believe my background and experience is useful and will help us achieve those things in our future.
All right. Thanks for that.
Thank you. My name is Ed Wolf. I'm very happy to be here. I'll start out by saying that I'm a small business owner, have been a small business owner here for 17 years, the time is flying. I'm a local attorney for 17 years in the county. I have judge pro temp in most of the counties, or most of the communities in the county for a period of years. I was one of the, I'm a veteran, proud of that. I was one of the last drafts, if not the last draft, in the US Army, so I say that proudly. I know we don't have a draft anymore. I left as an enlisted person, started as an enlisted person, left as an E4. And in 19, the early eighties, President Reagan asked me to serve as a US Ambassador and Deputy Assistant Secretary of State, which I did for a decade proudly. Also served in the first Bush administration in that same capacity. Balance has always been important to me, balance working across the aisle, both sides of the aisle, party lines, working with leaders from both parties. I've worked and helped Norm Dixon, Derek Kilmer, recently with McKenna. So it's been important to me to work with both sides in the middle as a moderate, which I've done. That balance is also important in terms of my private life, or I should say my personal life, and my family. I still try to balance out the work and the play, or recreation, I should say. Balancing, you know, working for the last close to two decades with nonprofits in town. Olympic College on the board, Admiral Theater, Boys and Girls Club locally here and Teen Center, was one of the founders of that, one of the three founders, or four founders that started that. So balance is important to me, and that balance is important working with both sides, whether it's nonprofit, whether it's profit, or whether it's political parties. My wife Wendy and I moved here 17 years ago from Seattle, never looked back, actually. Moved here 17 years ago, moved here for three reasons. Sense of community, neither of us had ever had that before, we still have it today. Moved here because it was a good place to start a business, small business. I started my law practice here 17 years ago. And we moved here because of the natural environment. I mean, that's really part of our lifestyle, it's not a political campaign mantra, although I've used it a few times, it is our lifestyle. We kayak here, we bike here, we sail here, so the environment was a major part of why we moved over here. And I'm running for KSAT County Commissioner for the same reasons that brought us here 17 years ago. I don't have time to go into that right now, but the same reasons that I just mentioned. I also feel very strongly that it's time for a change on the County Commission. It's been 10 years since a Republican, and I may have mentioned I'm a moderate, centrist moderate, it's been 10 years since a Republican's been elected to the KSAT County Commission. That doesn't mean that they're bad people, I certainly would never say that, but I do believe it's time for a fresh set of eyes, someone else at the table after 10 years, someone with different values, value system, someone with different life experiences, and that's another reason that I'm running. I mentioned I'm a moderate centrist, I've supported both sides of the political aisle, and I'll just close by saying my endorsements cross both sides. And it may be a surprise to many people in the community that I have support from the Machinist Union and aerospace workers at the shipyard, not sure they've ever done that before for a Republican, generous contribution from the Suquamish Tribe, the Sheriff's Deputy, Gil endorsed me this week. And then I move over to the other side, and the Home Builders Association, the business drivers in our community, as you know, home builders, and the Realtors have endorsed me. So I feel very proud that I'm crossing over both sides in terms of support. And lastly, I'll just say that I think with close to 54% in Central KSAT, my primary win, I think I have an endorsement at least from Central KSAT at this point in time, District Three. Thank you.
I'm going to ask a Central KSAT, real specific question, Central KSAT to start with. Nope, there's David. Good time. They're talking about the West Sound Arts Center potential, political performing arts center at the C P County Campus or somewhere else in the area. A, I'm just curious about your interest in that project, your philosophy on what should happen there, if that's something you believe in? And then, the second part of that question is, when the YMCA was built, the county was actually a financial contributor to its completion building. Is this the same type of thing that you would be willing to say county money needs to go in to make this happen? Because, Ed, we'll let you go first.
Well, I think there is ample need for another performing arts center. And I say that not with reservation because of the years that I've served on the Admiral Board, and I think there's room for both organizations, and I've met with some of the people that are involved in both of them. We all know without question that there are budgetary issues, budgetary issues, just in our county, but everywhere. I'd want to read, before I committed to a performing arts center, I think it's a good idea, I'd want to read, I believe there's a consultant's report, if it's out, I haven't read it yet, I'd want to read the consultant's report, continue meeting with the stakeholders, I met with the, anyway, I met with all but the performing arts center, the library and the other group. And I think your question was, is there a need for it when I support it? Yes. Question is-
With county finances, what do you-
I'd want to look at that. I wouldn't want to commit to county finances because one of my goals as a Commissioner will be to go in and listen and learn, as I do practicing law, if we're going to court, and find out what the priorities should be. And if that fits at the top of that priority list, I would support county money, but times are tough, we all know that.
Great.
One of the things that I have been working on since January is a plan for the community campus, and the property was purchased, I'm not sure how many years ago, but the community council came together and established a list of priority uses that they wanted to see on that campus to create a civic heart for Central KSAT and a gathering place that would be activated with a vibrant number of community activities. We were very fortunate that the YMCA came there first and really created that impetus for bringing people to the community campus. Some of the priority uses the community council identified are a performing arts center, along with open space and other public uses on that site. The West Sound Performing Arts Center is a nonprofit that has come together and is exploring the desire to locate a new performing arts center on the campus. They're talking with Sea Stock as a major tenant, and I think that if we have a performing arts center on the campus, it will be a really great public and community amenity. Now, you're right, the county did help and support the YMCA locating on the campus, and you're probably aware that I helped put a package together in response to a request for proposal for the Silverdale Library to consider locating on the campus. I do envision a similar type of package for future entities that might locate or choose to partner with the county in locating on the campus, but the package does need to be negotiated and it needs to be balanced. To borrow a term from my opponent, it needs to be balanced with the public benefits and the amenities that are provided for the community.
Maybe explain that a little bit more, and what does balance mean to you? How do you make that decision that when you say, yeah, this is what I'm comfortable with?
Well, it's complicated, and the first thing I look at is, does it provide a benefit to the community that the community is going to support? So specifically in terms of the performing arts center, a key component to that is going to be their capital campaign, and what they're able to do, and the level of support in the community, of people that are willing to put their money into that type of facility. I would envision, since the county owns the property, we might do a ground lease for a dollar a year lease, so that it's not something that is a budgetary, a budgetary issue each year for the county, but we can put that property asset to use in creating a public amenity. So that might be one example. Another example that we looked at was that because the county will remain the property owner, and I'll say I also envision a new community center, or perhaps a location where we have some county services, perhaps a satellite permit center, or some things that are decentralizing all of the county services that are in Port Orchard right now. There would be a public-private benefit to that. So in redeveloping the property, the county might choose to do the traffic impact analysis. We might choose to pay for some of the traffic improvements to improve circulation, and I'm already talking with KSAT Transit about how we might bring transit-oriented development to the site, because another one of those priority uses that the council identified a few years ago was the need for some additional senior housing in the area. So those are all pieces of things that we're working on. Between now and December, we're actually going to be outlining a framework and a timeline for the redevelopment of the site with the stakeholders that we've begun conversations with.
Quick follow-up, because KRL has said they are not going to be on the site if you've made that choice to go somewhere else. How do you think the county, or should the county at all, be involved with their planning for a future Silverdale branch?
I'm not sure-
Do you see a role, do you see a role for a county, would you like to be involved with that at all?
I think, I don't see the same role for the county as I saw if they would have chosen to locate on the county's property. I strongly believe that Silverdale deserves and needs a new, larger library. The community has come forward and is really supportive of that new library branch. I've been very torn about the two locations, the one that they chose is next to the Clear Creek Trail on Buckland Hill, and one of the, one of the great opportunities that I see for that location is this outdoor classroom, this connection with the Clear Creek Trail and the education center that's there adjacent to, to that part of the property. It is at the other end of Buckland Hill, so it actually sits opposite the community campus. So one of the things that I see as a great opportunity is how we might develop that corridor, that public right-of-way between the library and the campus.
Like a pedestrian-
Like a pedestrian corridor that has other amenities, and that we could activate that portion of the waterfront in a way that hasn't existed previously.
May I answer?
Yeah, quick answer on the library question.
Quick answer?
Yeah.
I met with the library, and I met with Sea Stock, and there seemed to be some dissension between all three groups in terms of where they wanted to go, where they were going to be, and who was going to pay for it. In my opinion, the stakeholders have to make this decision. And your first question, it was, how about public financing, if it's available? But I'll go back to my point about, you really can't, you've got to eat your vegetables before you have your dessert. And what I mean by that is, we have parks in the county, we have infrastructure in the county that is not a priority, in my opinion, has not been a priority. I don't want to see another Eagle Harbor issue as we had in Bainbridge Island. I think we should be spending more time and energy looking at our infrastructure. Again, if the money's available, great, but I know how the Admiral Theater does it, they go out and get money, and they get grants, and of course, and they obviously had Norm Dixon help them a lot with that, but most of their performances are paid for before the public is there, they're sponsored. So I think in large part, they're neat, the devil's in the details, in terms of how this is going to play out, what do the stakeholders want to do, and what kind of money are they going to come up with before a Commissioner says, yeah, we'll write a check for whatever, let's look at that report. That's my feeling.
What do you think, one of the things that is coming to that area, just to stick in that neighborhood there with the hospital moving out there, there's unquestioned, there's going to be more money, there's going to be more revenue coming to the county through all of that development, but the county's going to have a problem with the traffic in that area. I know there's already some things, you know, different exits being looked at, and what else will be built, and the DOT is part of that, but when you look at that, that neighborhood in Silverdale, knowing what's going to grow, Ridgetop, Buckland, how do you think the county best prepares for what's coming in four years and then kind of the decade after that? What are you doing now to get ready? What's your vision for that area?
And you were talking about the Silverdale area.
Yeah, with Harrison going in, those connections between, you know, Ridgetop, Silverdale-
Urban growth area, urban growth area on the comp plan?
Correct. And what I'm interested is traffic solutions and long-range planning, and what your vision is for that neighborhood, so they can still have the flow with all of these new people who are going to be coming in very soon.
Are you wanting me to start?
I was going to allow you to go first.
Okay, thank you. Well, we have some great opportunities to actually plan for those changes over the next 18 months. And aside from the comprehensive plan update, Silverdale has their own sub-area plan, and Silverdale is actually identified as an employment and housing center within KSAT County. We've actually started having conversations and recruiting key stakeholders and community members to be part of that conversation, because we do need to talk about infrastructure as well as where are the right places to locate major redevelopment. One of the things that I have queued up with our Public Works Department, because as you know, the comprehensive plan sets the 20-year plan, but then we have six-year capital improvement plans that look at the priority for infrastructure improvements, including roads and utilities. So within that six-year plan, we are looking at the Silverdale sub-area plan and traffic circulation. The traffic circulation piece is going beyond looking at existing rights-of-way and existing streets and roads, we're actually looking at where does it make sense to redevelop larger blocks in terms of how we're moving people and vehicles throughout the Silverdale area. You're absolutely right, with the new hospital, with Centercell, and the new mall that's going in on Greig's Way, as well as really looking to activate the site where the community campus is, we have a bit of a triangle of traffic, and we need to figure out what are going to be those key routes that go through there.
When you say, when you say redeveloping larger blocks in a way that would help, it would improve transportation, explain, what does that mean? Does that mean using, creating road spaces through there?
It might be, and that's where we're trying to look at creative solutions, and if you look at an aerial map of Silverdale, you see that there's an awful lot of parking area through there, and parking is necessary. But one of the things that I think we need to look at in the future is transit routes that perhaps go through some of those parking areas. We might be able, in a public-private partnership with some of the landowners, look to redirect some of that circulation, excuse me, in a way that actually allows for better traffic flow. So that's one of the things we're going to be looking at, both with transit, with property owners, and again, with the community, as we look at that sub-area plan and identify key corridors for redevelopment.
Do you think the county needs to be a property owner of those places, or would you be optimistic that you can work with people? And I'm asking this, I'm asking this because I know real estate is really, it's getting very valuable right there.
Yeah, it's a great question, and one of the things that you probably don't know is, while I was at Puget Sound Energy, I spent 15 years of my career working in their real estate and right-of-way department. So I actually think that owning rights-of-way outright, it's an option, but easements are also an option, and if you have a willing property owner that's looking to perhaps redevelop their site, there are some opportunities we should look at. I also want to say, next year, we will be constructing a major improvement along Buckland Hill, and that does include some major capacity and pedestrian amenities along with it. That will make a start, and Buckland Hill is the first priority to deal with in terms of the major arterials that run through Silverdale, with Ridgetop being the next one. So those are already identified in the county's six-year TIP, the Transportation Improvement Plan, and so those are some things that we already have funding for and are looking at how we can maximize those opportunities for improvements.
Ed, what is?
I'm going to try and hone in on your original question about the traffic, but just a little bit of background, I'm not an expert in this area, but I'm learning quickly, and that's what I do. Just a little bit of background is that, right now, we have a single voice of values and politics on the council, on the commission, and it's been that way for a number of years, I said. When this comp plan comes up in 2016, as is mandated, there's something under that comp plan that many of you may know about that needs to be addressed when we do the amendments, and those are the urban growth areas. What's an urban growth area? They're out there now. Linda was talking about partnership and working with the community. I can tell you unequivocally, from at least the Realtors Association and the Home Builders Association, they are very upset with the urban growth areas, as they exist today, and this will get to your traffic question. And they're upset because areas that are in the urban growth area under the comp plan right now, many of these areas don't have infrastructure, and have sewer, and have water, but they're in the comp plan urban growth areas. So my feeling is that we need to, and my belief is that we need to go back and look at those, the public capital program through Department of, not Health, but Public Works, and change those areas, because the Realtors are saying they've got land out there, the developers are saying they've got land out there that can be developed with infrastructure, but not in the urban growth areas. Trace Aden's a pretty good example. Trace Aden is in the urban growth area surrounding that Silverdale area, million-dollar homes, we all know that. They're not going to break those million dollars up, homes up into lots, and there's no sewer out there. So why is that in the comp plan? It skews all the numbers.
Do you think the county, so you're saying expand some of those areas, so you're required to put more infrastructure and allowing to build?
I'm saying, I'm going to sort of expand them, make sure that the areas in the urban growth, urban growth areas-
Existing areas are in the terror.
Existing areas have infrastructure, the sewer, unlike Trace Aden, because the whole idea is to build more lots, or one of the ideas, build more lots. Make sure that the infrastructure is present in the urban growth areas, and that's not the case right now.
So I guess then the question becomes, is a little complicated, but there's kind of priorities you're balancing, because you know with Harrison coming in especially, and there's these things popping up, that's going to be there to handle. Well, there are other people saying, I would do this if I could have what I need to work with there. Is the UGA question a bigger priority?
Than?
Than handling what the very pressing need for, there's some infrastructure improvements that will have to be made through Silverdale?
The answer, in my opinion, is yes. And why is the UGA important, why is the comp plan important? Because it affects all of our lives, it affects our roads, it affects our hospitals, it affects our health, it affects our recreation, our natural, our natural beauty, our natural environment. I think that we need to get control of the right areas in the urban growth areas, and the comp plan starts all of that. And it's going to be a long, arduous process. Well, actually, the county started that process, now they're going out to stakeholders, as I understand it. I think this is a bigger issue than in our conversation with the board, but I think it's a very, very, one of the most important issues, I think, coming down the pipe for everyone that lives here. And I'll just say that I'm not a planner, I'm a leader, and I run companies and organizations, but I'll hire the right people that give me the answers that I want.
Okay, let me ask you this, let me do this one next, because you're starting on this process too. You're hearing from the home builders, and kind of that group of folks that has a real specific need and what they want to do, and-
And Realtors.
Giving you these suggestions on what to expand it, whether it's expansion, whether it's just focus more on it, but in your introduction, you also said, I'm real conservative fire, which I'm not saying those folks aren't. How are you going to make sure you're listening to both, both sides, as you kind of balance that one out, because that's what a big part of the UGA purpose is?
Because, can I answer?
Yeah.
Because what I've done in my whole career is balance this. I mean, my- I mean, my platform, if you will, is bringing balance back. And I work with all sides, and I'm not ideological. And whatever's the best for my county, whatever I believe is the best for my county, working with my colleagues, that's how I'm going to work that. I mean, I don't have, I don't shoot in this direction. I don't shoot in this direction with the builders or the homeowners or any segment of ends of the party. But I'll balance about what I think is right, with the experience that I've had in the past negotiating over forty treaties with the State Department. If I can do Russia and China and negotiate and sign agreements with them, I can work with stakeholders and parties in this county. I think my record speaks for itself there, in terms of working with people in the county.
Do you agree with the shoreline buffers early in the comp plan? That's one that's been real contentious over the years.
I think that's pretty well settled.
No, you agree with what has been settled?
I'd want to look at it again. I just don't want to shoot from the hip and tell you I agree with everything but, or anything, but.
It doesn't sound like, it doesn't sound like that's not something you were making a priority. You're hearing about.
It's not something that I think is before the commission right now. And I think there were issues with the buffers before, with regard to grandfathering, but I'm not prepared to shoot from the hip on that.
Maybe you're starting this process right now. How do you personally kind of balance with these two sometimes competing interests? I'm not certain they have to compete.
Well, I think, first of all, I think one of the things that's very important is that in any policy decision, that like this editorial board, you have different perspectives represented. You have people that have different experience, different background, and they bring that voice to the conversation. That's one of the things that's so important about the community engagement and the public participation portion of the comprehensive plan is because it is important for different interest groups to have their voice be known as that plan, that roadmap for the future is articulated. We do have a robust public participation planned over the next eighteen months, and we've actively been reaching out to different interest groups, including the Realtors Association, Home Builders Association, but also environmental groups, to ensure that we are looking at and providing a collaborative conversation that hopefully provides some consensus around what those goals and policies need to be going forward. One of the things that's important, and I think I'll provide some clarification for in terms of urban growth areas and the role of the comprehensive plan. Urban growth areas are identified because they're areas that eventually will be annexed into or will become a city. One of the foundational principles of the comprehensive plan is that counties provide a rural level of service and cities provide urban levels of service. So in East Bremerton, where I live, there have been conversations where people are in that urban growth area and they want those urban level services. They want sewer, they want city water, they want sidewalks and things as if they were in the city. And part of the priority that gets set in that comprehensive plan is the sequencing as rural areas transition into urban areas. Before they are annexed into the city, there is a requirement that those urban level services are provided by the city. Now, I'll be really honest, over the last number of years when our county and the nation experienced the Great Recession that we're just coming out of, many of our cities had dire budget situations. The county did as well. And one of the ways some of our cities balanced their budget was by annexing some of those areas that were in the urban growth area to bring that tax base into the city. It's a good strategy. In some of those areas, though, they didn't provide the accompanying infrastructure. So one of the ways we work with those cities as a county is through interlocal agreements, through, there's a consistency requirement and a concurrency requirement in state law that those urban growth areas need to be planned for and sequenced, as I said, to eventually become cities. So East Bremerton, Traceyton, some of those urban services need to be provided when those areas become part of the city. It isn't the county's responsibility to provide those urban services all across the county. I mentioned Silverdale earlier because Silverdale is carved out separately and distinctly because it is identified as a growth center in and of itself. It has, it's an employment center, it has job targets that need to be accommodated in that plan. So that's why Silverdale is a priority for the county because the framework is there, and we're required to plan for that under state law. So while we would love to extend, if we could afford it, urban level services all across our urban growth areas, it's actually not something that is envisioned in the law or in the comprehensive plan. But the comprehensive plan does establish a priority for how those services are extended and in what areas they're extended to.
What's your priority, what is your personal priority? Where do you think it's most important? What, either what issue or what neighborhood is most important for this county? We gotta, we need to address this because either it's going to grow, either there's a problem right now, or it's just, this is the right thing to do. What would you put at the top of your list?
Silverdale. And I'm saying that because-
And you mean downtown Silverdale, kind of where that?
Yeah, how you draw the boundary, you know, I haven't really put a circle around what I call Silverdale. But we know that, we know that we have some development that's coming to Silverdale and some great opportunities there. And so as that happens, we have the opportunity to provide for, you know, there are impact fees that large developments pay for under the current fee structure at the county. So we have an opportunity to do some things that we wouldn't necessarily be able to afford just if we were, as a county, going to go out and say, wouldn't we love to put these facilities in this particular area of the county just because it's a nice thing to do? Those road improvements do need to be addressing the traffic issues that that future development is bringing and addressing the current capacity challenges that we have. So for me, I think that we have opportunities for those public-private partnerships there in Silverdale, and so-
What about taking the question in more of a policy, a policy angle? Policy-wise, what do you think the commissioners can do? And maybe I'll even link something to it because Silverdale, when you talk about Silverdale, you're also talking about economic.
Yes.
That's the retail base. So when you think about, when we, we're going to be doing policy in this comp plan, what's the policy we need to focus on to help build the Kitsap economically? What do you think's at the top of that list?
Well, you maybe know that there's an entire chapter in the comprehensive plan dedicated to economic development. And it actually articulates sectors that are going to be targeted, employment opportunities, specific industries. So for me, something that I'm going to be looking at as I'm reviewing that economic development policy in the comprehensive plan is, are those the right sectors for our community? Are those, are those real? You know, do we have, do we have the conditions here or the desire of the people that live here to work in those industries? Secondly, I think workforce development is critical, and we need to have a strategy to be training people to come into those sectors to be that workforce of the future. I know, coming from the utility industry, and I see this at the county, something like seventy-five percent of our workforce is eligible for retirement in the next five years. And so we need to be growing that workforce of the future. We need to be expanding our apprenticeship programs. And, you know, I actually say, we need to be growing our service line men in the utility industry because I don't see people going into those trades. Those are some key strategies that we need to identify in that economic development chapter. And we also need to be thinking about growing what I call our low-hanging fruit in terms of economic development. The number-one reason businesses choose to come to Kitsap County or choose to stay here is our quality of life. And so there's a very strong link between the quality of life we enjoy today in Kitsap County and our economic future. I think of the recreational opportunities that we have. And I, one of the questions I asked myself in 2013 was, why did REI decide to move here? Why did they open a business in Silverdale and bring fifty-five new jobs here? Well, some of the answer is that we have an emerging industry in recreational tourism. The Port Gamble Outdoor Recreation Center estimates $1.5 million each year in economic benefit from the tourists that come here to paddle or hike or just spend time in the outdoors. So growing that recreational-
How do you grow that? How do you protect it and grow it?
First thing we can do is, at the county level, we need to come up with an asset management strategy for the sixty-three hundred acres of open space that we have today and the fifty-eight launch sites that we have on our new water trail. That water trail designation that we received from National Park Service is the first saltwater trail in the United States, and that's something we can market. We can look at those launch sites, and in October, we're going to be forming an alliance that's going to be developing that water trail. We should be looking at, where can we put kayak storage? Where do we want to put, you know, overnight parking? Where should we have restrooms? Things like that, so that we're developing that amenity as we're marketing that opportunity here.
Does that need to take more money at the parks budget? I know you guys are starting next week, starting those budget conversations.
We are starting next week, and I have had a sneak peek.
Do you see that as part of that process?
I do. I know that our parks department, over the many years of our recession, was, had their budget pared down, and it's extremely limited. And so there are some things we need to do there. We also, though, have some amazing resources in our stewardship groups that have taken over, I'll say, ownership, quote-unquote, of some of our heritage parks and our natural areas. We have, I think last year, we had over two thousand volunteers that worked on our trails and developed parks plans and contributed an enormous number of hours to helping with that plan. So that's something else we can leverage to help us keep costs in check, but to also activate and get the people that live here excited about getting outdoors, enjoying the amenities that we have. And in doing so, they're going to feel more strongly about preserving those assets in the future.
Okay, good question.
Can I give you fifteen minutes also? Can I have a second?
We're going, of course.
Yeah, thanks. Linda's mentioned a couple times kayaks and REI. Just want to make sure, even though I'm talking about economic drivers that we have to have in our county, that this is my lifestyle. Kayaking yesterday, out with a bear in Elwha River next weekend. I'm not, I'm a little concerned about that, backpacking with my wife. So these things are important to me. That's why, one of the main reasons that we live here. She mentioned REI. I represent some of the people that brought our REI over here and put that package together. They struggled with the county. They struggled. REI wouldn't be here, quality of life aside. REI and people buying their product, they wouldn't be here unless the real estate people that negotiated with them and the, they wouldn't be here unless they were the economic drivers to pull this thing together. I'll just go back and reiterate something I said before, trying to address your questioning about how do we do this? The comp plan starts up here, and it's just so complicated. And Linda represents subareas and represented, or represented, mentioned urban growth areas. It's very complicated stuff. It's something you have to read a couple times more than- I wouldn't want personally, am I going to get hung for this? I would not want three Republicans running my government, whether it's in Washington DC, whether it's in Olympia, or whether it's here. I feel that strongly about this. Unfortunately, I'm a moderate, as we have three Democrats running it. I think debate is good. So how do we get to where you're going with your question? Yes, we protect our parks, but we have to fund those parks. We have to fund those land purchases and maintaining those parks. And that's been an issue that's brought to my attention, about not being able to maintain parks now and buying new park land. So how do I get to your question, David? I think I get there by saying, we still have to have that economic driver. Whoever those economic drivers are, the small business people like myself that Linda was talking about, we still have to have the people that are going to put these together. And then we need someone that's able to balance to make sure it's not harming our environment and we're receiving the benefits from the development that the whole county should share in.
What's a policy from the commissioner level that you see that can help that, I guess? Help be part of that?
Well, I think, one policy would be to have balance on the commission. I know I keep coming back to that because there's only one set of values that has been running with the commission. One person's going to, let's stop and pause and debate, as opposed to just-
Yeah, but give me, give me an example. Because if I'm opening a business, I need to know the person. I'm not just going to count and say, three Republicans, I'm not going there. Yeah, you know what I'm saying. What does that balance, the balance you keep talking about? What comes out of that that you think that would be different than what's going on right now?
Let me give you an example. And this relates specifically, or not specifically, relates to Department of Community Development. We're all familiar with that. And they would have their hands on a lot of what you're talking about, I believe. There was a, I don't want to get too far in weeds on this, a proposed amendment to the county code four, five months ago by the Department of Community Development. That proposed amendment went out to stakeholders, whoever the stakeholders are. And stakeholders went berserk. Because in that proposed amendment that the commissioners approved, or at least set forward to the Department of Community Development, in there was a provision, draft provision, that allowed code compliance officers under Title V to enter one's house without a search warrant. It's unconstitutional. Our county prosecutor said it's unconstitutional. Now, I don't know what happened, how all that got started, and it's been pulled for now. That's an example of civil liberties that, and that's way off from your direct question, but that's the balance I'm talking about. We don't need a commission and no one sitting there saying, pause, wait a second. This is unconstitutional. This Title V amendment is unconstitutional, as it is, as I believe it is, and as the prosecutor said it was. How can you have a code enforcement officer enter your house without a search warrant? So that's, that's an extreme example, but it's an accurate example of why I believe that we need another set of eyes on the commission.
Let me ask a different question.
Can I just?
Do you want to answer that Title V thing real quick?
Yes, I would, I would like to because I think my opponent has misstated some facts, and I think it's important for the public to understand the facts around Title V. The Department of Community Development, one of the most frequent complaints they get is around code enforcement and the lack of code enforcement. So staff actually took an initiative to look at some options for changing Title V. They drafted an initial proposal, and as- They drafted an initial proposal and, as we do at the county, sat down with a stakeholder group to have an initial vetting of those ideas. Those ideas had not been presented to the commission, they had not been presented for legal review. It was an initial conversation that was what I would call a brainstorming session to say, how can we deal with some of the code enforcement complaints that we get in a more efficient way that responds to the citizens that live here? Like all code changes and public process, that document wasn't pulled, it's been revised five or six times as there continues to be a back and forth discussion with people providing input into that code change. Now, I don't know if that code change will ever go to the planning commission as an actual proposed change and then come to the commission, but it hasn't come to the Board of Commissioners, it hasn't come to the Planning Commission, and it, and there is no proposed draft, nor has there ever been a proposed or adopted draft that was reviewed, you know, broadly within county government. So...
Question over here anywhere?
In regards to...
I just was running short on...
I have my veterans' questions.
Go ahead. Robert, go ahead.
Questions?
No, go ahead.
First one, foot turds.
Sorry?
The foot turds from Bremerton to Seattle. There's a big discussion, there's a group doing surveys and coming up with some suggestions to the board, and the commissioner sits on the boards for the Kitsap Transit system. Do you support a foot ferry service from Bremerton to Seattle run by Kitsap Transit? And would you, do you support the, one of the things that was proposed or looking at being proposed was a reduced taxing district to support that, leaving basically the unincorporated areas out of the taxing district. Still paying the tax when you come into the shop, but not having a say in the vote. What's your opinion on the foot ferry in this situation?
Unquestionably, and I've been dealing with the fast ferries and foot ferries, you're talking about foot ferry to Seattle.
Right.
Yeah. Unquestionably, I would support that. And about the taxing districts, I'd have to study that. I, I'm not up to speed on that, I'd have to research that. But that's what we need in this county, and I thought that 10 years ago, took care of some of the environmental issues that needed to be taken care of. But absolutely, I'd support, and a second fast ferry and a foot ferry.
That's a great question. I'll say I support fast ferries, but to borrow a phrase from my opponent, the devil's in the details. Citizens here in Kitsap County had rejected a couple of times a vote to pay for and be taxed for the operation of a fast ferry from Kitsap County. So I think that where the challenge occurs is in coming up with a viable business plan that isn't balanced with having the taxpayers here in Kitsap County subsidize that service. Now, some of the great conversations we're having are with King County because King County very successfully runs a water taxi service. And we have as many users in King County that commute this way as Kitsap residents going that way. So one of the things I support is a plan that is actually a partnership with King County. And since they're running a successful water taxi service, they might even be the right entity to run that rather than Kitsap County.
Have a second one if you don't mind. One of the things, dealing with State Department DNR, Department of Natural Resources, a chunk of property comes up for basically taking the logging. Say a five-acre chunk is undeveloped in Kitsap County, unincorporated Kitsap County, a logging company comes in, strips it, all five acres, no trees left hardly at all. Now, there's a six-year moratorium that takes an effect in regards to development, it's gotta get replanted, but the system allows right now for no notice to neighbors and people in Kitsap County if the person that does that logging goes and gets a DNR permit. I, I know personally, it doesn't happen next door. They, it stripped out a five-acre chunk, nothing posted, nothing on the website for partial search, nothing in contact with the county DCD knew anything at all about anything going on as the trees were falling down next door. How can the county and the DNR get their ducks in a row to keep the taxpayers and people in Kitsap County informed about what's going on in the property? DNR, my discussions with them say the county's ignoring some of the suggestions that they have, and I'm sort of curious as to what the county is doing in regards to being able to communicate to the taxpayers that these are the things going on in the property next door to you. Even though you can't find anything on our website, something's going on. What can the county do to fix that?
Do I go first on that? I sort of lost track.
Either way.
I, I'm happy to. I, I do remember, and I'm not sure if you're the gentleman that called in response to that, I'm thinking you live maybe out off of Seabuck Highway?
Wickley, South Kitsap.
South Kitsap.
Off the Boonies.
Okay. Well, the question you raise is a great one because it's something that I wasn't aware of until the last few months when I had a couple of citizens call and ask, what's going on next to me? I do believe that in situations like that, there should be a noticing requirement for people in the vicinity. And I think it's important from a couple different standpoints. I think, first of all, it's good to know what's happening next, you know, next door when there's a large operation like that occurring. I think it's also important from a public safety standpoint, when logging trucks are going to be on roads that they don't normally drive on, that just from a public safety standard, people that travel in that corridor have a heads up that there's this additional traffic that you need to be looking out for. I don't know what the county can do because there currently is not a notice requirement in code for the county to do that. But I do believe we need to talk with DNR and come up with a system and a process that allows for that kind of notification.
I would want to first research the code and see what the code says about that, but if I've got a piece of property and I'm living there happily and having my coffee in the morning or some trucks out there taking trees down or logs down, civilly, I would probably go observe. I would want notice of some sort. Here's the difference in my diversity of leadership and maybe some of the other commissioners. In past experiences or past positions, for example, Puget Sound Naval Base Association, not to do with the logging, I was a past president. When we had issues, I'd go to Washington DC for the Puget Sound Naval Base Association, meet with the CNO, Dix would arrange all that, of course, meet with the CNO or whoever we need to meet with when we had issues here with all of our bases. Many times I've gone to Olympia in different capacities, meeting with people in Olympia on different issues. I mean, if this issue affects, particularly the safety side of it, and notice is important, but if this issue affects someone in the county, I'd be in my car talking to someone in Olympia, whether it's DNR or whoever it might be. And I've done that in different capacities in the past and certainly am not shy about doing it again.
And I'll ask for a brief response to this because we can get longer time-wise. Setting aside your personal qualifications, intellectual qualifications, background, setting aside, you know, partisan affiliations, how would each of you describe yourself in terms of personal strengths, personal qualities?
You're looking at me, so...
Yeah.
So setting aside, you're giving me time to think, so...
As a person, as an individual?
You know, I met with the labor union, the hospital people, they came over to see me during the hospital negotiations and three or four people, and they walked out and, and the lady said, and went home and told my wife right away, she said, you're a nice person and we believe we can trust you. So if I don't get anything else out of this campaign, whether I win or lose, I felt good about going on telling my wife that someone from the labor union said they could trust me. It's probably not what you were looking for because I'm...
Sorry, I apologize.
I follow through on what I say I'm gonna do. And if anybody did check my record, I think you would see that that's true over the past 17 years. And I'm beholden to no one. So that's actually what I should've said first, I'm beholden to no one.
Sorry again for that. There's a second phone in there too, so I turned the one off.
I'm an apologetic person.
I, I've been described as someone who is a bridge builder and someone who collaborates. And part of, part of my background and experience, I know we weren't supposed to talk about that, but I have been involved in community outreach for many years. I've worked with and for many community organizations with diverse viewpoints. And as I said, I've been described as someone who can listen to different points of view and looks for a way to come up with a compromise.
Okay, this is related.